Good evening, Chair Bukowski and Agency members. This is a study session on the Reduced Market Street Alternative. By the way of background, TMG Partners in August 2005 submitted an application for marketplace redevelopment and that was a proposal to construct four new buildings, which would accommodate about 340 condos and about 61,000 square feet of retail space. As a part of the permit processing and CQ review, the draft EIR was published in June of last year, and the draft EIR contains the analysis of the project as well as analysis of four alternatives as required by CQ. The final EIR was published in November, and that included the responses to comments on the draft EIR. In response to the comments made on the draft EIR, the final EIR contains an additional alternative, and that is the Reduced Main Street Alternative. This is a modified and a smaller version of the Main Street Alternative that was analyzed in the draft EIR. As a result of this environmental process, staff recommends and the applicant concurs that the Reduced Main Street Alternative is the superior project for the site. The goal of the study session is to introduce this Reduced Main Street Alternative to the agency members and solicit comments on it. This is a summary of the difference between the original project and the Reduced Main Street Alternative. The Reduced Main Street Alternative is a bigger but a long-term phased project, which would result in the redevelopment of the existing surface parking lots with structured parking, mixed-use development, and new city grid, the two new streets, and an enlarged city park. The main difference is, you can see the last column here, we have additional residential units, more about 100,000 square feet additional retail commercial space. They are introducing about 100,000 square feet of office space, and the UA theaters as a part of Reduced Main Street Alternative is assumed to be removed from the project, which was not the case in the original project.
Can I ask a point of order?
Okay.
Mayor, on the City Council agenda, this project is also on that agenda for the EIR certification. Are we going to hear that at the same now or are we going to wait?
When we convene the redevelopment meeting, I will move that item up so that they heard almost concurrently.
Right.
Go ahead, Maru.
Sure. Like I mentioned, this is a phased development project, so the Phase 1 of the project would be, just to get you oriented here, this is Shellmount Street. These are the railroad tracks. This is Christie Avenue here and 64th Street. So in the Phase 1, the development would take place on two main sides, this portion and this portion. This is Shellmount Building 1, and it would include retail space along Shellmount Street, 10 townhouses, and parking, a four-level parking. The height of this building would be about 50 feet. The second building, or Shellmount 2 Building, is a high-rise. It will contain about 196 residential units, over three levels of parking, as well as ground-level retail right here. The third building would be the 64th Christie Building, which is located on Christie 4th and 64th Street. It will replace the existing warehouse that's there right now with a mixed-use project, 8,000 square feet of ground-level commercial space parking, and then 185 units over eight levels. The height of this building would be 85 feet. In addition to these three buildings, we'd also have small retail paths right here at the corner of Shellmount Avenue and Shellmount Street, and a small pad next to Borders. Both of them would total about 4,500 square feet of retail space. In Phase 2A, under the first option, this involves realignment of the Shellmount Street, and it moves it west away from the railroad tracks, thereby creating space for development along the tracks. What would develop here is a office space. You'd have 120,000 square feet of office space. It would be five levels, over five levels of parking. There would be ground-level commercial along Shellmount Street. In Option 2, the realignment of Shellmount Street would not take place. Instead, if depending on the market conditions, the UA structure would be removed and redeveloped with the following: about 100,000 square feet of retail space, which would be two-level. There would be a high-rise here, it would be 150. It would contain 130 units, and there'll be commercial space at ground level again, about 14,000 square feet, along with parking and 68 townhouses. The Phase 2B would, depending on whichever construction takes place, whether the UA theater comes first or the realignment of Shellmount Street comes first, would see both the Shellmount Street realigned, the UA theater replaced with new structures, as well as, excuse me, creation or development of 63rd Street, which is right here, which would connect Shellmount Street to Christie Avenue, as well as a small plaza at this area. In the Phase 3 would see redevelopment of this area of the marketplace site, which is, like I mentioned, a surface parking lot. This would be again a mixed-use project, 86 residential units, over three levels of parking, with ground-level retail space. The height of this building would be 85 feet. There would also be a small retail pad at what is right now the existing Christie Park. The Christie Park itself would relocate northwards and enlarge, so this whole thing would be a park. In addition, 62nd Street would be created, created between Shellmount Street and the park. The way between this area and the park would only be a pedestrian way, so this street would not go through all the way to Christie Avenue. There are a number of other pedestrian improvements, pedestrian transit and bicycle improvements, which I'm going to let the applicant go through, since they have an extensive presentation themselves. In terms of timing of phases, the total proposed phasing horizon is anticipated to be 25 years. The phasing horizon is dependent on the current tenant leases, their consent regarding parking arrangements during construction, as well as future tenant departure. The construction of Phase 1 is expected to begin in 2009, 2010, and the Phase 2 and the Phase 3 would proceed after that between 2010 and 2024. In terms of financial considerations, the implementation of this plan would involve costs that may not be supported from project revenues alone. These include costs of converting existing surface parking to structured parking, cost of establishing new streets and relocating Shellmount Street, also creating a new and large Christie Park, and of course, the talks of cleanup. TMG may make a financial assistance proposal to the agency that might involve replacing the existing parking lot into public parking structures. The agency assistance could be financed from new tax increments revenues from new buildings and tied to the phasing plan. In terms of next steps, should the agency conclude that the revised plans and phasing meets the objectives of the agency for the improvement of the marketplace, the following steps would be appropriate. One is the council certification of the EIR, which is on the council's agenda tonight. Just to let you know, the Planning Commission recommended certification of the EIR at their December 13 meeting.
What was that vote, please, of the Planning Commission?
The planning, it was unanimous with Commissioner Donaldson recusing due to conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
The next step after the council certification of the EIR would be the Planning Commission consideration of the project plans, and then would be the agency negotiation of an owner participation agreement for any agency financial assistance that may be needed and appropriate. Staff requests that the agency provide us comment and direction regarding the overall size and uses of the new building additions, the phasing plan, as well as support for the agency assistance to offset any extraordinary development costs that this would involve. With this, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer it. The applicant does have an extensive presentation with more detailed plans, so.
Okay. Are there any initial questions of Maru? Shall we continue with the presentation?
Let's continue.
Okay. Applicant, come on forward and tell us what you've got to show.
I'm a partner at TMG Partners, and we are very pleased to be in front of the City Council tonight to discuss land use plan for the Emeryville Marketplace site. We developed the marketplace almost 20 years ago. In the early years of our company, we've now been in the Bay Area for 25 years. Just to let you know a little bit about what else TMG has done in that period of time, we are, as of 2007, the largest commercial real estate development company in the San Francisco Bay Area. We do not specialize in any single product type. We build housing, office, and retail. We've done landmark projects in communities throughout the Bay Area, including in these slides, the Land Market, One Market, which is directly across from the Ferry Building in San Francisco and now home to Microsoft and Del Monte in San Francisco. The slide below it is a very large, high-tech complex we developed in the peninsula with over a million square feet of lab and office space. Next to that is the Albany Target, is a Berkeley residence, a place I spend a lot of time at these days, but that's something TMG developed with Target Stores in the City of Albany a few years ago. And under construction and currently for sale is the 1116 Mission Project, which is a high-rise, for-sale, high-end residential complex, and still doing quite well in spite of the recent market downturn. So we're not only active in the Bay Area, but we're proud to be a part of the Emeryville community and to say that we began our work, really, in the Bay Area in places like Emeryville. Our early projects in Emeryville included a lot of what you see on this slide. Not only the Emeryville Marketplace project, but the Bay Center offices, the Emery Bay Club and Apartments, Powell Street Plaza. What doesn't appear on this slide is the Emeryville Loft Project, and a lot of those buildings we built almost 20 years ago, we held them in our portfolio for a long period of time, and we've now, as developers, refocused our attention on the Emeryville Marketplace, which has, in my personal opinion as a planner, been crying out for a new approach. It is an old 80s-style mixed-use development, economically very successful, but as a land use plan, somewhat disappointing. It's this large sea of surface parking with buildings that are separated at different ends of the development site by parking and cars, and really doesn't reflect the best thinking of the current century in land use planning, mixed-use urban infill development, transit-oriented development. So when I started working on the project in 2003, we began thinking about how to convert this site, which does quite well today, but really could be something better, into, away from its current auto-dominated landform, and into a neighborhood that we can all be proud of. And I'm happy to say that we received this week comments from the U.S. Green Building Council on our application to make this neighborhood one of the first U.S. Green Building Council certified neighborhoods in the United States, and the U.S. Green Building Council believes we're eligible for a platinum-level certification for the Emeryville Marketplace redevelopment. So we're incredibly pleased to be making this presentation to you tonight and to be moving along with all of these components. We started talking with the community about four years ago about the marketplace site, and we submitted about three years ago to do a preliminary development plan and a full-scope EIR. We're one of the first full-scope EIRs that's been done in Emeryville in recent years. Lots of projects have been approved in a variety of ways. Many of the biggest projects have had full-scope EIRs like Marketplace. And so we've been working on it for about three years. One thing we did that's a little unusual, I think it's caused some confusion, we'll talk about it later when we talk about the EIR, is that not only did we propose a project and do an EIR on the project, but we knew that with a 15-acre site and a lot of interested community folks, there'd be a lot of debate about what the right site plan would be. So we've asked the city to look at a variety of land use alternatives to give the city the opportunity to engage in a pretty active dialogue about what the right ultimate site plan is for the site, and then have the EIR support whatever decision the city makes. So when we get to that discussion later, you'll see a full-scope EIR with a lot of alternatives and a lot of options and mitigation measures, and that's so that you and we can have discussions beginning tonight and going for the next few months to figure out what the best project is for the city to approve at the marketplace site. As Maru pointed out, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, we've asked the city to give us a development plan for this entire 15-acre site in four phases, and have the development plan set maximums, maximums for height, building massing, where we can put buildings, overall traffic and circulation impacts, and total amount of square footage. That development plan will be followed by final development plans for each site and phase. Unlike, say, a Chiron or a Pixar, we don't just do one thing. We're a private commercial developer. We build a variety of product types, and each individual site might want to be something over time that it wouldn't work well as today. So with a 25-year phased plan, we're asking the city to give us flexibility over time to determine exactly what each building will look like, what the mix of building and parking and land use will be in the building, provided that it's consistent with the initially approved development plan and the initial environmental review. And then with each final development plan, the details about what's the building material, how is it clad, what does it look like, what's the public improvement package that goes with that building, and so forth, would be detailed in the final development plans for each site and each phase. And then again, as staff mentioned, we are proposing to the city for consideration, not tonight, but at a future date, that in addition to asking you to approve the development plan, that you consider allowing the tax increment generated just by my Phase 1 project to be dedicated to the construction of a city-owned parking facility that would be located on the site plan location, we'll go over later, and that your financial assistance to construct that parking garage will be used to help get this project going. This project is incredibly, incredibly complicated. It's not like buying raw land and proposing buildings on it. There are tenant consents that encumber the site. The site has contaminants like many sites in Emeryville do, but in order to get any project done, I have to go and get willing consent from the Woodfin Hotel, Borders Books, Regal Theaters. The site is encumbered by leases. I can't just go build a building when I feel like it. I need to roll my building plan into my tenant leases. As we get into the OPA proposal, which staff will get this week, we look forward to discussing with you whether that's a good idea or not, but really what I'd like to focus on tonight is the site plan, so you can understand what the whole program is and see if that's something you're interested in. What I'd like to do now is turn over the presentation to my designers. They are thrilled to be part of a design team to do one of the first lead green-certified neighborhoods in the country, and they're here tonight to show you their terrific ideas for how to really redevelop Marketplace into something we can all be proud of starting today and going forward. The first speaker will be David Gates, who's our landscape architect and also for TMG, does a lot of master planning work.
Thanks, Denise. Good evening.
Will you raise your microphone up a little bit?
Great, thank you very much. You have to hear me if I do that.
Well, the TV audience needs to hear me.
Little more?
Thank you.
Okay. What I want to do is just give you a snapshot, you know, briefly of what we think this neighborhood can be, and fun for me because we worked with Denise way back when, and I've seen the evolution from old warehouses with a lot of surface parking to some underground parking and surface parking, and this particular scheme will really weight toward the pedestrian. You know, there will be surface parking only at key areas for bus drop-offs, and the emphasis is on the pedestrian and the bike and sort of a vital sinew. And what I'll talk about tonight is the landscape fabric that really connects and brings the pieces together, and as was explained by Denise, right now it's kind of a quilt of parking areas, nice retail destinations, places to live, places to work, and lots more asphalt. So our goal here is to kind of complete the neighborhood, define what a neighborhood should be, and looking at this plan, and I'll use the cursor here, basically, we're looking at the historic grid and trying to keep basically 63rd doing what it does, adding a new 62nd, and building an open space system of quiet recreation, passive, some degree of active, and really vital lively streets that sort of take that grid, share the pedestrian with the car, and give you those places to work, places to shop, places to eat. And what I'll do is walk you through these five sectors and give you some images that, as Denise said, you'll see this back in more detail, but I think it'll give the spirit of what the place can be. And right now, the key in a way is how these spaces link, and Area 5 really is taking your existing park, redoing it, increasing it by about 30%, and then giving it a proprietorship, putting some retail little jewel down there so it'll have activity around it. So there's a little key map in the upper left, so this is what we're calling the main plaza. As Shellmount bends, it's highly visible. It's going to take and surround the outdoor use space with retail activities, and it becomes a focal point for those shoppers who are moving north and then bend and come down a spine, basically. There'll be a cross-axial spine right here at 62nd that will take you down to the Village Green. This will have water elements in it, places for outdoor seating, eating, all sorts of a range of things, and the traffic will move through, but in a way that is weighted for the pedestrian and the bicycle. And the images around it give you some sense of the kinds of uses, pockets of eating, raised planters for basically what we're calling rain gardens. Your soils here are difficult. You got a high water table, you got a saline intrusion, so for us to be able to raise the grade a little bit, berm it, get better plant growth, and use that for what's called rain garden filtrations. So the next, then, moving on, seeing in the upper left again, kind of moving down the Main Street. The streetscape itself is the lifeblood of these neighborhoods, being able to walk through them, enjoy them, have activities, look into storefronts, and so that the lower graphic shows you the existing marketplace with Borders Books, and Jeff Heller will talk you more about the architecture and how it meets the ground, but it's these edges that really make this a neighborhood, and the way, the scale of the buildings and the sizes of the streets and the proportionate of open space sidewalk to the scale of the street and the size of the buildings is unique and a great opportunity here. And then, of course, we've got the train station. We need to earmark that as a special place. There's a plaza there. There'll be wayfinding elements that sort of help you get from one place in the Bay Area to another. The stairs will be a piece of sculpture pulling you up there in an inviting way. They'll be accessible for bicycles and ADA. It's a nice bend in the corner, so it becomes a very special place and almost a portal to other parts of the Bay Area. The Gateway Plaza, there's a green there now. We'll reconfigure that. We'll put a small jewel box building in there to give it some life and vitality and bring some opportunities for shopping and eating there. It's an opportunity for sculpture. Again, it's one of those flat iron sites. It's highly visible as you're moving north, so there'll be a lot of visual interest as you pull people from Madison Marquette up into this area, so it's a key spot for us. And then probably the crown jewel will be what we're calling the Village Green, and we have the pedestrian spine that's bringing you down on New 62nd Street on the grid. Takes you all the way through what is an existing park now that gets redone to the existing green space on the other side. It has a recreational component, you know, for kids, frisbees, dogs, and other things. It has seating nodes around it, built-in seat walls, opportunity for sculpture. It has the retail component, which will spill out places to eat and sit, and we're calling this kind of the town square. This is where the bicycle race starts and town loops around town and ends up coming back here. There's an outdoor water element for that, and we're trying to take the streets and shape them in a way that the landscaping jumps to both sides of it, so that the residential here will feel like it's on the park, and we're doing the same with other sides, and we're taking the existing sports bar and connecting it to that spine. So it really becomes an organizing visual center. These are just a couple of graphics showing, again, the components that we think makes this neighborhood work. So you're looking to the north up Shellmount, you know, you've got the rail stairs here. You've got the existing sidewalk that's part of Marketplace now. We're going to double-load that, so we get activity and energy and vitality on both sides, and then the Gateway Plaza is here. And I think important for us, and I know Jeff will talk more about this, we want this to be sustainable. Regional Water Quality Board, environmental issues, water usage, we know your city's at the forefront of that already. One of the first good guidelines came out of your community. It works especially well for us here because of the soils. So you'll see a new landscape look. You'll see a lot of built-up, what we call rain gardens, so we'll bring the landscape up. We'll bring in soils that act as filters. We'll take the water from the roofs, the roof decks, we'll run them through those filters. Those filters will be seat walls, so you'll see a look here that we think is an upscale urban look, and you'll see a vegetation palette that's rather different. We'll take it from the edge of the buildings, we'll take it up the face of the building, and because we have some parking structures that are good-sized buildings, we're actually going to create green walls along those, so that I think there'll be a whole fresh new look of what is a neighborhood, and there'll be a whole fresh new look of what is the landscape in a sustainable neighborhood. Also, I didn't mention it, but we're looking at some photovoltaic trellises along the roadway to generate power for some of the electrical events that we'll have along the street, and we're doing that partly because the trees are difficult, and it'll give us basically a new kind of tree, if you will, with a trellis-like element up in the air with some photovoltaics. So we're willing to have some fun and experiment with some fresh ideas here. So the next image, I think, will be for Jeffrey Heller. He's going to talk to you about the architecture and all the three-dimensional components.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. You know, there is a, maybe didn't realize it myself till tonight, there is a real strength in working with people you've worked with for a very long time, because there's a real strong unity of idea and the whole concept of this that developed over time with us, with TMG and with David, you know, we all know and work with each other so long, that it's made for, I think, a very powerful diagram. And I think there's really only two essential messages that I'd give here, and that one is that we're going to want to take this, you know, fairly tired and obsolete plan, which is the marketplace area, and change it into the, really, the first and only concept plan at this time, which is truly pedestrian-oriented, truly public-oriented, and forward-looking in every measure. So this will be the place, and it is at the center, really, of Emeryville in many ways, that will look to the future direction where people dominate and cars don't. That's our main idea, and it's quite exciting for us, I think. So just showing how that might implement, the first phases, the first phase that would happen would be to bring buildings in, and the buildings would be over near the Amtrak Bridge, and they would help define that gateway that links the east and west of town, both with the parking structure, which is fairly low on the south side that Denise mentioned, and the building on the north. And again, with flexibility of program, as the project develops, the buildings and the projects are designed so that they can go either residential or office as is appropriate for the site. And then over at Christie and 64th is another building project, and that is, that is one that's scaled to step up some in height, but not a lot, and help frame the future park area, because what you'll see is as the plan develops, the people spaces are really framed by and defined by the strategy of the building designs. The circulation is really the existing circulation, except that we straighten out, I guess it's 63rd, on the south side of the building on the lower left, and the rest of it is the circulation as it exists today. This is the first-phase piece. And then the pedestrian and bike circulation, even at this level, is reinforced, and here you can see the beginnings of the concept of the nodes that link the various ways through the site and strengthen those even at this early stage, including going over the bridge and coming from the retail further south along Shellmount. This is a summary, but we've gone through that. I won't dwell on this, other than to say that the, there's a kind of a balance of the residential units and the office square footages, so that the plan develops over time in a fairly balanced way that fits within the environmental document, and there's replacement cars that come in and come out over time in each phase, so that there's not disruptions to the way that the vehicles serve the site, and thereby minimize the impacts that might happen to the intersections around. This is a massing diagram of that first phase, and you can see that the tallest element is just north of the Amtrak Bridge, northwest of it, and the lower element is retail and parking structure that was discussed, and then the other low building at Christie and 64th, which again, could go office or residential, depending on what makes the most sense at the time that that is brought forward. forward. Then there's a series of opportunities that are the second phase, and they have, you know, 2A, 2B. But just to show the various second-phase opportunities, I'll just go through them, and they can mix and match as well. Now we've shown in darker gray the Phase 1 buildings. There is a building that allows you to shift Shellmount, so it becomes double-loaded, and that would be a step down office structure between the railroad tracks and a shifted Shellmount street. And what it does is it moves the street and double-loads it to begin to emphasize that pedestrian access.
What do you mean double-load?
On both sides?
It means that retail happened on both sides of the street instead of one side of the street. And activity happens on both, pedestrian activity happened on both sides of the street rather than on one.
Okay.
And this shows, this shows that in the green dash lines. Now you have people, bicycles, all kinds of opportunities on both sides of Shellmount in this particular diagram, as well as leading through the existing park and over to the other part of the project. Now, as an alternative, bless you, as an alternative, if the movie theater goes away, you could develop that corner at Shellmount and 64th where the movie theater is, and that has opportunity for retail and residential and some office opportunity as well. And that keeps, that particular strategy of the second phase would, at this point, keep Shellmount in the location it's in. But still, the other pedestrian paths are strengthened as they were in Phase 1. And that piece could add 200 residential units, 115,000 of commercial. And then, when those two are combined with either one of those coming first, then that creates, again, the redirected Shellmount, the strengthened pedestrian path. But now, there's also a nice little detail, which is right up here, where this part of the relocated road now shifts, so it comes in at a normal angle to the relocated, let me back up, Shellmount, and creates a really nice plaza area and removes some cars. So now, that strengthens further this whole movement along Shellmount and provides a spatial destination, one of the ones that David showed you. In the final phase, the park, let me back up here, because I think that's a fairly strong piece. The park expands dramatically and is defined on its west side by a low building that has residential. But now it's framed and it becomes a major destination in this part of the city. And I think David's exactly right. It's where bike races and foot races and everything would start and stop, and civic events would happen. He talked about the retail on the park, but it's really meant to be, you know, Tavern on the Green kind of experience, a really special restaurant relationship, restaurant café relationship to a really major usable public space. And here, circulation and the pedestrian pass. And now, you can see that there are, these major nodes have been fully developed, and they all become places where people can, you know, meet each other, gather, find a little bit of, or a lot of relaxation and amenity. This is the three-dimensional view, diagrammatic, of that whole plan and how it hangs together. And from another view, from the south side, you can see the way Shellmount works between the buildings, new and old, and the major park that we've done along Christie. And then these images, David's mentioned them a bit. I'm not going to dwell on architectural detail, other than to say that the composition of low and high buildings, the scale of the buildings, the idea of the relief of the facades of the building, where they create bays and balconies and all those other elements, and especially the retail at the lower levels, all will create this animated place, which is a place that not only would people come to be in, but people would live and work and have that mixed-use experience at a transit destination, which is what everybody is looking for, for the future. So this is meant to be everything in that kind of goal in the strongest possible sense. And then this view is, we've got Pacific Park Plaza behind us, and we're looking across the major park, and you can see the scale of the buildings and the visual textures of them and how they define the park. And to the south side, to the right side of this picture, eventually there'll be some other building that will help define it. So this, to me, is probably the most major statement that can happen about the future in Emeryville, and I think we're all pretty excited to be part of it. Sustainability was mentioned, but I think we were surprised. Our office is doing a lot right now in the whole sustainable effort, including working with the state and a variety of organizations. But what surprised us is when we submitted this for this pioneering program, this first off-the-bat time that master plans are being submitted for a LEEDs rating and certification. So we're in this pilot program. We came back with an extremely high score, and it's based on the philosophy of the plan. So right away, we get 50 points. We're already at LEED Silver without even thinking about it. And highly likely, I mean, almost without any heavy breathing, go to LEEDs Gold. And also, quite likely, we get all the way to Platinum, which is the highest rating. And right now, only government buildings and a few special corporate buildings do Platinum. So this is a very exciting time from our standpoint and hopefully from the city's standpoint as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Are we almost done here?
Yeah, we're done, basically. I'm just going to say thank you and goodbye. Here we are, summary. We've been working for a few years to put together a coordinated plan for the land that was originally the Marketplace site, for the additional acquisition we did a few years ago of the 64th and Christie site. And we're looking forward to beginning this development and bringing this neighborhood of Emeryville into the next century. We're also looking at opportunities to expand this neighborhood still further. We are under contract to buy an adjacent property. So we're presenting this plan to you tonight, and we're looking forward to talking to you in the coming years about the final development plans that we bring forward to you and about possible yet additional enhancements to the Marketplace neighborhood that TMG looks forward to building. The final thing I wanted to mention was that, you know, Jeff sort of lingered on that park slide, that the advantage of having, you know, we started this like a typical developer. Look at site, do building. And what was left over was a lot of acres of parking. The community has educated us to think better and differently about our site. And that's how we went from a two-building project to a million and some odd square feet of development over the full 15 acres. Because the community, in comments on the public hearing of EIR at the Planning Commission, in meetings with them, kept saying, "God, we're so disappointed about this sea of parking that remains if you just do the first phase." At that time, that was the whole project. We want you to think more and better and harder. And so we did. And we're proud that that dialogue with the community led us to what is a plan that we initially didn't start with. And when, actually, the first folks in the community suggested it, we didn't like it very much. Like, "How are we going to do that? And how are we going to phase this parking in over time?" So the beauty of the public process, when it works well, is that we learn from one another. And I have to say, the TMG learned from the Emeryville community how to think a little harder about planning for this neighborhood. And as a result, we're really proud to be the sponsor of this project for the full 15-acre site, which at the end of the day can not only be one of the first green neighborhoods in the country, but can take a 15-acre entirely private-owned piece of property and add new public streets, new sidewalks, new parks. About 30% of the property, at the end of the day, will become public land again. New streets, new sidewalks, new parks. So through this partnership, we've come up with a whole that's much greater than the sum of the parts we started with three, four years ago. And we're really happy to continue that dialogue when this project goes to the Planning Commission in a month and a half or so, and then when it comes back to you for merits action, I believe sometime in March is the current schedule. So thank you for giving us the time tonight to make the presentation, and we're all here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have public comment and then have the questions. Is there any public comment on this project? Please come forward, sign in, and...
Wendy Silvani, the Emeryville TMA. I have a letter that I'll leave with you. I'm writing in support of certification of the final EIR. This development, we were really pleased, is one of the first to include a transportation plan. That plan is both comprehensive and really substantial, addressing both the major elements like the street grid pattern, and also the finer details that make walking, biking, taking transit both a natural and easy choice for people. I think it's sensitive to overall access and connectivity that all of us in the alternative transit mode really need. We believe that the increased revenues that we'll get, combined with what will happen as part of the development's independent commitment to things like subsidizing transit passes, car sharing, creating elements that are really conducive to encouraging people to get out of their car and leave their car behind. They're also tied to results. So we believe that we'll be able to really enrich the community as a result of those. Adopting policies such as unbundling parking, sharing parking facilities, designing the sidewalks, as you saw on the slides, that have eyes on the street and they're safe and they're really walkable, and that's what they're designed to do, are important steps towards a shift in transportation models which discourage the single-occupied vehicle. Things like car sharing actually make it possible for people not to even own a car. So in closing, we'll look forward to working with all of the developments that were included and all the possible scenarios for the future in the EIR to set new standards in transportation planning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're actually not considering the EIR at this point, but, you know, this is mostly comments on the design, but we will be hearing the EIR consideration after this immediately. So, John?
Hi, my name is John Sherman. Excuse me, I live at Pacific Park Plaza, directly across the street from this project. I'm really excited about this. I'm one of the people that looks out my window and I see the surface parking lots, and I'd love to see those go away and love to see the plans that we're looking at here for the parks and open space. One of the things that's really exciting to me about this is that when I got involved in the general plan update, I tried to get educated about what makes, truly what makes a walkable, livable neighborhood. And what I discovered through research and observation in other cities is that it's really based on mixed-use, high-density, and the transit. And this is a project that really speaks to that. A lot of you have heard me talk about transit-oriented development over and over and over again. This is it. We're doing the right stuff. We've got an Amtrak station that has 40 commuter trains a day coming through there. We need to work with that and build on our transit. If there's anything that I'd like to see different about this, maybe, maybe we could go a little bit more. I think the density that we have here is a little conservative. I think it's based on our current general plan, not in the future general plan. So when you look at this, maybe you should look at that aspect of it with possibly more high-rises that could possibly bring us more green space or things like that, variations. I'd also like to consider a linear park along Christie Avenue, if that could be incorporated in. If one of the buildings could be set back a little bit, we could have a beautiful contiguous park all along the length of Christie from 65th up to probably Powell, possibly. And then the other thing I'd like you to consider is looking at a master plan kind of thing. Before we get too far in this process, look at the big four, kind of like you did for the traffic impacts. Try and put all these together and look at the big picture, because it's not just pedestrian connections on this site, but it's the pedestrian connections from the new transit center, from the BRE Gateway Project, and how they all fit together. And I think there are things that we could do a little bit better, and create a synergy with these different projects. The other thing, Denise said something about an adjacent parcel. I'm hoping that that is the hole-in-the-ground blighted area. If there's anything that the redevelopment agency could do to get rid of that and incorporate it into this beautiful plan, we would certainly love to see that. The other thing is the city-owned parking garage. I really like that idea, and this is another area where I think there could be great synergy between the transit center and this project. I think there can be a lot of shared parking between the two, so we can minimize the amount of parking. That's one of the aspects of the TOD, is to minimize the parking, go for the transit, as we had spoken about. But I think this gives us some great opportunities, so I'm really excited about this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Brian Donahue. I live at 4333 Holden Street. This is a rare development proposal in Emeryville that I can say I would completely support, and I think it's a really great plan. It's very resident-friendly, and it's bicycle-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And from the unbundled parking, I like the idea of the city-owned parking structure. I criticize the council a lot for not negotiating on behalf of the residents when it comes to developers making proposals. And I think that criticism is well-founded. Here's a rare case where you don't even need to negotiate. I think this plan, as it is right now, is excellent, and it's very, it's the kind of development that I've been hoping we could start attracting in Emeryville. And so I can't say enough about that. I think it's a really good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Possible to use this? Go right ahead.
Flip it around.
Twelve bucks an hour.
Try to read this for you as quickly as I can. Good evening, council members. I'm Stephen Keller, a seven-year resident at Pacific Park Plaza. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Marketplace redevelopment plan, and specifically the building titled, in the rendition of the plan, I saw Residential 3, but which they called Shellmount Building 2, the 14-level tower at 175 feet, which I feel is poorly placed and should not be proposed on its current site, which is shown in X there. As many of you know, I'm a strong advocate of taller buildings, but it is vital that our tallest structures be carefully and properly placed in our city. The one negative I most often hear about high-rise buildings is that people in Emeryville do not want a Miami or Manhattan skyrise. And that, I wholly agree. And the way we avoid doing that is by not placing taller structures too close to one another. By placing Residential 3 on this site, it situates it too close to the Transit Center across the tracks, thus putting taller structures too close in proximity. Is my contention that the Transit Center and its height hold precedence over the building at the Marketplace, and I believe this for three reasons. Reason three, not only because of the cost of site remediation and the needs of this building to serve as a profitable commercial endeavor, but most importantly, because the Transit Center will hold services vital to the public interest, it is well-known that this building needs to be tall. Number two, as it is known, the Transit Center site, which is between the post office and the Amtrak station, is far more constrained in terms of usable space than the Marketplace development. It cannot shift its position one way or another. But the number-one reason that the Transit Center building takes precedence is that building a full-fledged Transit Center is or should be Emeryville's number-one development priority. If we're going to do our part to mitigate traffic congestion and provide alternative transit options, thus reducing our impact of global climate change, we have to start building the infrastructures needed to accomplish those goals. The building of the Transit Center in tandem with the Marketplace will create a new and needed paradigm in infill development known as transit-oriented development. I realize that the Marketplace development must also be a profitable, commercial endeavor and will also serve the public interest, but I believe that there are other places within the development where this lost square footage could be regained. Looking at the site map, I believe the southern end of the building Office 1, which is here, and the adjoining parking structure to the north here, could have their heights increased. Another place to look is at Residential 5, could for increased levels... Another place to look is at Residential Five, could for increased levels and/or the northeast, northeast corner of the building, Commercial G, at the far end of the project, which could also possibly see levels added. Compared to the Transit Center site, which has no options of where or how to place the building, I feel that the Marketplace development has a vast number of options within this project site that could prove viable options over the current site of Residential Three. The Marketplace redevelopment plan overall is a good plan and one, as a neighbor, I support. But the taller buildings must be taken into consideration, taller buildings in the area present and proposed. Thank you for your time and your work for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I'm Eric Holman, Managing Director from Anis Marquette, the developer of the Bay Street project. And I am, I'm here to not, I'm here tonight not to cast stones at Denise's project. As a fellow developer, I live in a glass house and have to be careful about that. In fact, there are many attractive features to this development plan that I think are commendable. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the process that's been used. And in particular, it's the decoupling of the EIR certification from the project approvals. What's happened here of late is, an EIR was circulated that had a project, which is a project that we reviewed and had our experts review. And then to, we were not aware of a switch in the project to a more intensive alternative. We haven't had the time to sit down and meet with Denise, and Denise is more than willing to, to meet, to understand the impacts of the project to, to our interests at Bay Street and particularly the Site B project. The process has sort of created a, a competition for scarce infrastructure, I'm afraid. And what I, what I'd like for you to, ask you to, to do tonight is not to delay Denise's project, but merely to move the EIR with the project approvals, keep her on track. I, I, like all developers, am sympathetic to that. But I need time to evaluate the impact of this larger project. There are implications of a long-term, multi-phased project to our EIR, which will have to be revised based on new base case conditions. The certification has ramifications to, to our project, which we have not adequately studied. Also, we need to review the allocation of mitigation measures, which we've not had a chance to do as well. And then finally, I'd like to understand better the retail vision for the project, to see to what extent is it compatible or competitive to what we plan and have at, at Bay Street. Ideally, there should be, and staff should be working with us to obtain a certain synchronization of these major projects that you want to see happen here. We need time to complete that process.
You know, Eric, I haven't opened the public hearing on the EIR. This is really just comments on this, on the initial proposal here. So, when I open the public hearing, I don't know if your comments will be included because it's not within the scope of the public hearing. So you're really addressing something before we've even got to it, so...
You're right.
So, maybe you want to hold the rest of your comments until we get to the EIR?
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this redevelopment?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development, and I will take the opportunity to speak later when that comes. But to speak about the project, we also, developer, and we believe some intensification on the Marketplace site could be a great benefit to Emeryville. The amount of intensification is an important issue to discuss. For 18 months, we've been part of the quote-unquote "big four," but tonight we're realizing that the Martin Group's project alone is bigger than the other three combined, so I'm not sure that it's a big four. It may be a big one and three others. And so that just puts it in a different context. But let me go to the, the issues I think I'd like you to think about most as you proceed through the dialogue on this project. It has the opportunity to bring amenities to Emeryville. It's proposing an unbelievably long entitlement period of 25 years. And I ask you to think about how much Emeryville's changed in the last 25 years, even in the last 10. And can you envision what the city wants that far out? Think about things such as the Kaiser Development Plan and the Chiron Development Plan, and what actually did happen with those and what hasn't happened, and how long they've been in place. So that's an important thing to consider. The public benefits and the phasing are very important to think about, too. It looks to me that there are really five big pieces, and it's possible that three of those pieces could come into place without any of the real public benefits that I heard described, the relocation of Shellmount, the creation of a new 62nd Street. It seems from, from Jeff Heller's presentation that what was deemed the crown jewel, the city park, won't happen until the fifth phase. That could be 25 years from now. So I think you need to link what, those important benefits into timeframes where you want to see them. And what, you know, what that actually becomes, I think, is important and just worthy of study. Also, the way the proposed uses can change, I mean, it, it would be very different to see all those buildings residential or all those buildings office. You know, a big retail component or not, so the ability for uses to change and how much control you have over that during the 25 years, I think's important. And those are the kind of things I think you'll really want to think about as the dialogue continues.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, the study session is closed. I'm going to open up the Redevelopment Agency and the City Council meeting, but first, let's do the...
Can we, can we stay with the study session?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, excuse me. All right, I thought, all right. Do we have any council comments on the study session?
I do.
John?
Okay. I evaluated roughly this project with regard to the zoning ordinance, and I was happy to see that it doesn't completely conform to the zoning ordinance, but it substantially conforms. And that's something that is important to me, and so I was happy to see that. I would like more information about the subsidy. This developer is asking for what could amount to tens of millions of dollars from the Redevelopment Agency to funnel that money into a public parking garage. And in principle, that, it is a good idea, but if the num, if the money, if the millions of dollars is really just a subsidy for this developer and not, not what it should be, and that is to provide for a public parking garage, then it's wrong. I agree with Jeff Sears. It was not, I don't think it was Jeff, but it was David Gates, who mentioned that the park would be a jewel. And I agree that, that the park is going to be a very nice amenity. For some time, I have argued that developments in Emeryville need to provide concrete benefits to the community. This project does provide some benefits, but the crown jewel is one that does not come until 20, 25 years in the future. And so that's one, I think, that should be part of Phase One, not Phase Three. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other council members? Agency members?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I appreciate the work that has been done here by TMG and the direction that they have taken from both the Planning Commission and the, and the community. This is an entirely different project than what was talked about two or three years ago. And I don't often agree with Brian, but I agree with Brian tonight. This is the kind of development, the kind of concept, the kind of greening and neighborhood vitality that we are looking for. This is early days, but I think we're started in the right direction. And I would like to, I agree with John, we need more information about how the subsidies work and how it's going to flow back through to the people of the city. We also have to take a good, long, hard look about when the public spaces and the public amenities are going to come forward. But the concept itself, the overall concept, is brilliant, and I think David has done a good job, and Jeffrey has done a good job. So, I support this. I'd like to see it move forward. It's, I think, 25 years. Again, I agree with Jeff, 25-year time span is something that's going to have to be taken a good, hard look at. But this is a good project, and let's move forward.
Ruth?
I have a question for, for Charlie or Helen or Mabrou. Procedurally, if, when approvals come back presumably in March, is that an opportunity to get into a finer-grain discussion about specific buildings, much like Stephen Keller did tonight? Or is that opportunity now during this study session?
Well, that's definitely later.
It's an EIR-related question, right?
Yeah.
You're talking about the buildings and things of that nature? Is that your question?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's not tonight.
If it comes back for approvals through the Commission and the Council in March, are, when are we going to be able to put in, get input into kind of the finer...
Well, certainly that'll be the time when you're asked to approve it, but if you want to give more input, if you have specific information you want to do right now, be my guest.
Okay. So, with that being said, I'll, I'll have a few comments. The applicant presented many of the benefits that I think are truly benefits for the whole community. And so, overall, I think the project is really the first demonstrated project of, of a direction that we really want to move in. I happen to agree with Stephen Keller's comments about the placement of that residential tower. And I would add to it that, that it concerns me if the city approves putting more housing in along the railroad tracks at all. I noticed in the EIR document, there was some language about changing from triple painting windows to, to just using other available methods that might be available at the time to reduce the noise. But I have concerns about putting residential right along the tracks, because even our later projects like the courtyards, there's still complaints and people are still woken up at night. So, and the second reason why I don't like that particular building there is that it seems to hide the pedestrian bridge over the tracks. And I think that's going to feel more friendly and conducive for use when it, if there has a, retains a bit of an open feel and a visual line on it. So, of all the buildings and phasings and things, that's the one that kind of stands out to me as, as needing some work or some additional thought. And other than that, I just want to make a comment about the Neighborhood Development LEED certification. And it was, I believe, two years ago in a, one of our Washington DC lobbying trips when we went to the EPA, that we first heard about this coming online and thought that actually, so I'm glad, I, I see the application for this ND LEED certification in this project, but also in some other projects that we want to do in town. And I'm happy that you kind of jumped into the, into the mix there with that. Just a question about whether you were going to have flat roofs and whether they were going to be green roofs or have solar panels, and if you had thought about that. So that's a question.
In the lead-up application, we went into an enormous amount of detail about these sorts of issues, at least at a concept level. And one of the, and actually in discussing the project approval with the Planning Commission, which we haven't gotten to you yet, we've started talking about conditions of approval and how those would be formulated. And one of the concerns the Commission has, which is consistent with the LEED guidelines, is that there be no large expanses of flat heat-intensifying roofs, that there be no exposed parking in a garage if it's, you know, not enclosed with a roof, that we, you know, Jeff showed you vertical green walls going up the sides of buildings. We're also talking about horizontal green, where you have like a cable line or trellis. You see a lot of this in Europe, actually, and vines over time grow over the top of the building, not just the side of the building. So we'll be using a combination of rain gardens, vertical horizontal green. Not every roof will be green, but we, we are interested in looking at foldable tayex on roofs as well as green roof surfaces to create a three-dimensional habitat along the sides of buildings and on the tops of buildings for birds, butterflies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Ken? Yeah, just a, just a couple. Again, I'd like to follow the comments complimenting the team on the amount of work that's gone into it and, and that it's a, a much more finished project, I guess, than a lot of the ones that, that we see. And I know from spending some time, kind of chatting with this, chatting about this with, with Patty, that, that both Jim and Patty had a lot of input into the give-and-take process here before it even got to the Commission. And I can certainly see the handiwork of, of those efforts there. So I'm thankful to not only the developer for being open to that, but also to them for the time that, that they've put in. In terms of the park, I don't know, we have a park there now. You know, we can all debate how usable it is, and, and it's definitely, definitely got some flaws that we want to fix. But I'm not as concerned about where in the phasing it fits because of the other things that you're doing. I'd certainly want to move it up as soon as we can, but it may not be possible to do that. I think I'm more concerned, as others have expressed, about the length of the phasing. And, and so I'm, you know, I'm kind of open to considering all that within the prospect. One of the things that I don't understand also in a specific is, there's mention in the, in the write-up about the Amtrak elevator working somehow in conjunction with the building. I, I'm not sure how that works, and I'd like to see some detail on that, because as we all know, that's been a huge problem for us in terms of vandalism and, and so forth. So, you know, in, in one sense, I think having a building there will certainly put more eyes and ears on that whole thing. I, I don't know how I feel honestly about the location of the, of the high-rise. I, I'm not as concerned, I think, as Steve is about where it goes. And, and I think anything we can do to enhance the overcrossing and make it safer and bring more density to its use will be a positive thing. So I, I'm not as concerned about it being hidden as I am of trying to get a sense, and, and Steve, I'd like to kind of chat with you some more about, about that down the road. But I'm, I'm open to the building being there. I just haven't really thought through some of the things that, that Steve raised today. One last area is that I, I didn't hear anything in here about potential improvements to the existing office tower that I think is really not very attractive. And, and I would hope that somewhere in the process of, of these phases, that we don't just look at building a great new thing that surrounds it, but that we try to enhance it also. And maybe that's being planned, but it, I don't think any of us are overly proud with the, about the architecture there. So, it's a great, great start from where we are, and I don't consider it just a start. I, I think we're, we're definitely headed in the right direction. So, congratulations to the team.
Great, thank you, Dick. And I, and I just want to make some comments. You know, for 15 years ago, I worked really hard to try to get that road next to the building. I mean, John Flores and I, that's one thing we really agreed on, was trying to move that road. The only thing? Well, just one of the things. But moving that road next to the building really creates an urban environment there, something that's long overdue and something that I strongly support here. I mean, in addition to creating a street grid, I mean, you know, the city has these large parcels of land, so creating a street grid there makes a neighborhood, and it really makes it very exciting. And Jeff, I have to commend you. You've done an excellent job here of designing this, and, and, you know, you get better, we all hopefully get better as we get older, so, you know, so there's my comments there. So, so anyway, so with that, I would close the study session, and then...